Thank you for allowing him to intervene on our behalf right tonight. We ask to you and pray to you, Father, and we love you. And we pray in your holy Son, Jesus Christ, the name. Evening.
Hey, Kingus, I'd like to apologize for people who were out very far ago, but Kelly came and made threats to me, and when I didn't say what he said. I apologize to you, Kelly, for getting out of line, but what you did was wrong. You shouldn't have come and got in my face and put your finger in my face. I apologize to you for that.
We have to love each other, that's why.
This meeting is a workshop to discuss the garbage. Kingus wanted to have this meeting. We will be discussing garbage and garbage only tonight. And, Kingus, if you want to...
I'll just tell you what Lynette and I said from day one. We've been through, I don't know how many ordinances, and I guess the court, for whatever reason, we've not been able to do one except for the last one. And I think the court directed us to do a franchise, and we did that, and we couldn't get any bids. And I guess the court sees now the need for the county. I believe you told the people, and the people told us two meetings ago, we need to get out of the county business and garbage collection and disposal. You all tell us how you want it done, and Lynette and I will do the research. We'll try to come up with a way, send it down state for approval, and try to get it done for you. But you all have to tell us how you want it done, in the future.
How we going to do it, boys?
We have two kinds, commercial and residential, so you all can discuss it, let us know, and we'll try to come up with what you want.
I mean, the only other options we've got, basically, Judge, is possibly franchise out the commercial, and then do universal pickup on the residential. Because we've tried to do, you know, we tried to do the franchise for the entire county. We came up to three different ordinances, just like Kingus said. We had no bids, no takers, and it's basically our only option that we have left.
So we want to franchise the commercial.
And I'm just saying, you know, what are their other options? I don't want anybody to have any other...
Me and Josh...
Suggestions on it, but...
And Darryl...
Just a suggestion.
Was at a workshop, I mean, a training session this morning. He come up about solid waste, and I asked him how many counties in Kentucky was mandatory, and they said forty-eight. And I said, "Other than us, then how many is universal?" And pretty much, Josh, the rest of them's universal.
Yeah.
There's forty-eight mandatory counties in the state. So that leaves, what, sixty-eight?
Sixty-something.
Sixty-some, but it's got universal.
But what we're doing now is also called universal.
What we have now...
Basically, a term that takes in everything except the franchise.
Basically. Not mandatory. It's mandatory that people dispose of their garbage in a proper way. So I think that's pretty well much the way we want to go.
You want to do franchise the commercial. Well, how you going to do the residential?
Universal.
Well, what does that impose? How you going to do it?
Ask your contractors from each of your districts, hauler on their batteries, right?
Well, you could do it as in districts or zones, and you'd have two or three private haulers that would take care of that district or that zone.
Right.
And, you know, would haul it to a certified landfill or a dump site, and they would collect from the residents, any resident there wasn't collecting from. They'd report that to the solid waste coordinator. The solid waste coordinator would then turn, go to the resident's house, and say, you know, "What are you doing with your garbage?" And if they're taking it to a certified landfill, and they got receipts to show that, then, you know, that would be okay. As long as they're dumping it in, you know, in a proper place.
What are you going to do if they don't dump?
Well, that would have to come before, I guess, as far as what the restrictions, what's set up, the penalties and the fines and everything set up in the ordinance.
What is the state law? What does it state actually that a person has to do at their household garbage?
You have to dump it in a certified location.
No burning whatsoever? Yes, you can get a...
Well, I think you can maybe burn like leaves and debris like that as far as garden, wood. You might be able to burn paper. I don't know for sure about that. But you'd have to do the research on it and find out.
You need to present us with what the law says before you try to impose something on somebody. What I would suggest, hey, let the county shut...
You can't burn household garbage.
You don't. You can recycle that. Let the...
That's what I said. If you show receipts...
Let the county, if they're wanting out of the garbage business, just let them shut it down.
You're fine. You know, if you show that you're disposed of it in a proper place, you got the right to do that.
I've got a fireplace that I've burned mine in.
Let me tell you, I had to do this. I got called on, and let me tell you, you just can't just take it down there and dump it. You've got to have a seven-week federal profile before you can even dump any kind of waste. You've got to go to Republic Capital. Their only place that you can do it is down at Ashram or St. Hurley. But whoever dumps it has to be certified. He has to have an EPA waste number. And you have to keep your paperwork up every three months. And when you take it down there, whoever takes it down there, if you haul three loads a day, you can give them one check, and then at the last, you tell them that's what it is, or if you want to do, check every time. But it's going to cost you twenty dollars a ton to get rid of it. That's what it's going to cost the guy that hauls it. But you cannot get in there if you do not have that waste number, and if you don't have the federal profile, you can't dump it. They're just, and let me tell you, they are strict.
If you franchise that, Greg, they would have that in ordinance, but they would have a file without state and federal regulations.
Yeah, but to dump it down there, that's what an individual's got to do, or contractor. They've got to do that.
Have you ever tried to get your, like, waste management without no restrictions? I know, because you've tried to get them to keep these dumpsters open. Just tell them to just do it on their own, don't worry about the dumpsters.
In the very beginning, we did. We changed that around, make it more appealing to them. You know, we took their letters and tried to design it so that we could get a bid.
But you kept the dumpsters in there.
Not on the last one, I don't think. We may have said one.
Because I can't see why...
That's the normal thing, to keep one transfer station open, just like in Johnson County.
You can't see why they would take and pick garbage up all the way around Martin County and then not want to do Martin County.
I think the counties pay them, and then the counties have to force them.
Can I ask a question? Kelly said something about state mandatory. Could you explain to me what that means?
State mandatory garbage is that one contractor gets the job. He bids on it, and that's what we tried to do.
Yeah.
And we had Waste Connection, Runkie, Apple Valley, and one more, I can't remember the name, a new company that was in Hurley, and they come down here and looked at the situation, and we've not been on it.
Did we have any restrictions?
We did have first, then we took it out, exactly what they asked us to do, or actually asked for Apple Valley asked.
Yeah.
And then we dealt it.
What was the restrictions? I'm just curious. You can't remember? Does anybody remember what the restrictions were?
I think what it was, they wanted to keep the transfer station.
So that's what they did?
Yeah, but I think they even asked, if I'm not mistaken, I talked to that guy and said he would even, you know, if they wanted to take them out. Bottom line, if I'm not mistaken, I told us, they wanted guaranteed payment from the county, and the county to go out and collect on people, I guess. They'd have to start our citizens to pay them. Am I mistaken? You all can tell me if that's not what they're saying.
Are you wanting to close the transfers? Is that what you're trying to do?
No, we're not wanting...
I mean, I'm, you know, like...
That's the best thing to do. If it's for safety, seven hundred thousand a year.
If somebody wanted to lease them, like somebody that wanted to be in the universal business, and put a set of scales at maybe on his landfill, and then everybody pays as they go.
That's what...
You know, prime example, lady that lives up in Coldwater, her daughter comes and she takes her garbage out about once a week, has one garbage bag, maybe a week, and then, you know, she would pay this for that little bit of garbage she'd have. Now, you know, people like me and you, we have five days...
Yeah, but I would take my mother's garbage off, and she wouldn't have to pay. You get what I'm saying? I would pay for my mother's garbage. I have paid for it.
No, that's what we want to try to work out.
Well, why don't we, I mean, I don't know, like I said, I'm not in, but why don't we see about paying monthly, you know, with a card? You know, people put stuff on the rearview mirrors all the time. Eden Elementary has a number. You know, when you pick up your child, you got that number, and they know you're on the list. I don't see why that would be an issue, you know, with any company coming in. Now, that's just me. I'm a hairdresser, like I said. You know, it's just, I'm throwing it out there. But I think everybody probably would be satisfied with that. And if the companies come in, couldn't they lease it? It would say, "Them guys."
If you prosecute two or three of them...
That would be ideal.
So could I use your card and take all my garbage?
You're paying for tons, for the picture I do.
I mean, it's...
You know, you could sell...
Yeah, but if they prosecute you for not having a card, then people would get cards.
I think that was the whole purpose or problem with them a lot of it, that they didn't have any way to enforce getting their money if they come over and claim it, why they didn't want to come in or anything.
Right.
They wanted the county to pay them guaranteed pay.
They wanted to make sure they got paid for doing their service.
Yeah. My husband, he, we haul garbage in our truck. All I need is one. And if somebody, like he said, his little old lady's got one bag of garbage, I'm paying that fee. I don't care. It's one bag of garbage of my mother's. She can't afford it, I can. I mean, what's the big deal? What, you mean somebody get my card, or I just loan somebody?
You know, if, you know, I don't know if that kind of system of work is good as a meal ticket, you know, when we used to get a meal ticket.
Yeah, and they punch it, yeah.
Then it wouldn't matter who had the card. It'd have so many...
They're still getting their money.
Right. They're still getting their money, and then if the card's got five visits on it, if he wanted to give it to his neighbors, it wouldn't matter. It wouldn't be sight specific to one person.
Right.
Then, you know, still you'd have to have a number of bags, because you could go in there with twenty bags. There would be probably a limit of five bags or something.
Yeah, my son, he's always going to pick up, because he don't want to call them off garbage. I mean, he said, "Oh, I can't wait till they go picking it up."
If we can get it worked out, it'd be the best of both worlds. That's why they call it universal. If somebody wants to pay a hauler, they can do that. The problem we have here is how are we going to break up the county and districts if we, you know, I don't know that it would be fair to leave District Four stand alone, because I don't know if you've seen the map of the managerial, District Four takes up probably more than a third of the county.
Yeah.
So that means, because all the districts has weighted the same amount of people.
Yeah.
So that means that District Four, the houses are going to be sparse, you know?
Yeah, spread out, yeah.
Now, you know, I don't know how fair that system would be.
Yeah, I understand.
If you allowed it to be four and five, it might be, you know, more...
Feasible.
Do four and five, and maybe, I don't know.
I know. Years ago, we had the dumpsters. You remember? We had the dumpsters. It was probably about a half a mile up on the turn spot, and we throwed it in there, and then they come by and pick it up and dump it. You know what I'm saying? We had those. But see, it'd be hard to collect that way. You know, I understand the billing process there, because people's not paying up rock houses, and ones that are paying, they're not going to get their garbage.
But if we could work out where somebody had maybe Warfield and Inez, and they charged people that come in there, and if that person wanted to sell them a meal ticket card...
Yeah.
And then if somebody wanted to haul their garbage, they would have a, you know, we'd have to restore the haulers, because we have to have reporting from them for us to stay. You know, I don't, that would be the best of both worlds.
Yeah.
If we can get that worked out.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have a problem with paying for garbage. I really don't. That's not if they're going to, you know...
Transfer stations? Remember, the transfer stations are permitted as a temporary.
Yeah, that, we talked to them about that. That is an issue.
Just making an amendment.
Right.
Well, I don't, you know, what I don't understand is how do you, you're a Johnson County, and I talked to the solid waste coordinator over there, and I talked to the guy at Apple Valley, the man's son, the owner's son. And basically what they said, you know, I said, "It's strange that you're on the garbage business. Everybody's in business, you know, you want to expand." And he did tell me, you know, that what they wanted was basically for you all to collect and then pay them, and then you all be responsible for collecting the people. And I said, "Okay, how does it work in Johnson County?" And the way it works in Johnson County, I've got a copy of the ordinance, the guy faxed it to me, it's pretty strict. If you get, it's twelve seventy-five a month, that's it. I mean, twelve seventy-five a month, I'd pay that.
Yeah, I do have to go shuffle, yeah.
Is if you're in arrears, you pay over two months. If you get behind two months, then you get a letter from the ecology officer, what they have over there. I guess it would be our solid waste coordinator or whatever. And you have to come in to show proof of where you've been disposing of your garbage. If you've got a hauler, the taller the doll, then fine. If this guy's a, you know, if he's a licensed hauler, you know, I guess in Apple, you know, Johnson County, you don't have to get your garbage picked up by Apple Valley. Somebody picks it up, then fine. But you've got to show one of two things. Either a copy of a bill where somebody's picking up your trash, and it's got to be, or a bill where you've disposed of it in a landfill. And the fines for not complying with that range from twenty-five dollars a day to five hundred a day. That, you know, I'm assuming the house, you know, a, you know, guy's going to get twenty-five dollars, if you're a major corporation, it's five hundred. And the guy wrote to me, said, "We don't have a problem with people not paying our garbage bill." They get behind, they call us, they come in and pay us that bill, and then they start, you know, they start, you know, then again, if you had an ordinance with some teeth in it like that, I mean, you can get some people, you know, you get people to participate. I would say, and I don't blame the hauler. I wouldn't want to come in here and invest a lot of money in equipment and stuff like that, and say seventy percent of your people pay, thirty percent don't.
If I remember correctly, we had, you know, fines, jail time, all that.
Not jail time, we had fines. We had fines on the last one.
In our ordinance as far as, you know, the teeth, they couldn't pay.
Here's what he told us, if I'm not mistaken, Gary, you can ask him tomorrow. Mike's here too. Then he said, "How much would they have to invest over here just to come over here, Mike?" And he said his son was coming from Lexington. He didn't know his son, because his wife was sick, and he didn't know his son.
The guy from Apple Valley's sitting around here.
Right here, yeah. Right here he is. You know, the guy from Apple Valley over there.
He's been sitting back here telling you.
Please come up and tell them.
Well, that's the reason, I was talking to him, said, "Your dad was a little leery of investing in money and equipment, stuff like that, and they, you know, had to risk all that."
Let's let him talk.
I'll say in my county, they don't do a great job enforcing it at all. I mean, we have at least twenty percent of our county that isn't signed up, or they get the link, and they don't sign that. That's, you know, fact of the matter. Really, the judicial system, you know, in my county, it doesn't have any teeth. You know, they can go out, and they can give somebody a citation, if it goes to court, it's really nothing worth a slap on the hand.
Yeah.
You know? I'll speak for Apple Valley in the fact that, you know, there's no, I have nothing against this county. My dad wanted to retire, and I came in and I took it over in April. You know, to invest in new equipment and everything that would be required to come over here is a substantial investment that, you know, really, my dad's the one that would be the one to sign for it. And like I said, he's retired. I'm not anywhere to that point in my career with Apple Valley to be investing in five hundred to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment to come over and start up a new, basically, a new business.
And that's why we didn't have any bids from any outside companies. Waste Man, and you and two or three others, I believe, we asked.
You know, my dad started it thirty-one years ago, and, I mean, I was a teenager at the time, and I remember how much of a struggle. I mean, it took years for him to go from the red to the black. You know, the county did not enforce it then. They do a bit better job now than what it was, and we have a lot more people signed up now than what we did thirty-one years ago. But, you know, my county residents were very, kind of against change, I guess, if you could say, in having an ordinance kind of put on them, saying, "Hey, this is a mandatory rule."
And you all do it door-to-door over there.
Yeah, we do, we slightly do door-to-door.
How much do you all burn in your area?
I don't know, I'm going to discuss financials.
Can I ask you a question? Okay. If, say, if the court were to, say, do we have, you know, thirty-five hundred customers, your customer rate is such and such, would you do it for a reduced fee? Let's say if you were guaranteed that you can get your money, hundred percent collection, and I know this kind of thing, but pressure on the court to make sure these people pay, could you offer a reduced rate?
Well, and what I said to you on the phone, because you called me, I said, you know, what would make it appealing to a company to come in here was to have the county collect. It wasn't per se, this is what the county needs to do to have Apple Valley come in, because, again, I can't go down to the bank and get the loan to buy the trucks to do it. I mean, that's just a sample.
A sample, so you can't come over here.
And, you know, my dad is getting into his retirement age, and I'm not going to ask him to come in and sign a loan for three quarters of a million dollars.
But if your money were guaranteed in the mind, and then it was up to somebody else to collect?
Again, what I would say to you, that makes it more enticing for anybody to want to come in and do it. That's...
But not necessarily for Apple Valley.
If this hadn't happened three years ago, we wouldn't be here. You know, I'm sure that Apple Valley would have come into an agreement, you know? A little personal story, my mom got cancer about three years ago, and that really just pushed my dad.
I'm sorry, Dad, I thought your dad, you know...
So, you know, had that not happened, my dad might have not retired. You might be seeing him instead of me, you know? But that, there's been some life changers for him that personally would really keep Apple Valley right now from expanding, whether, you know, whether it's Lawrence County or here.
But you all have the franchise for the whole county, is that not correct?
We didn't get it.
That's what I thought. So, Gary, that was not, you know, they have the franchise.
Yeah, they have the franchise for the commercial.
But no.
So can other haulers come in and pick up somebody else's garbage?
No, we have a...
No, they have the franchise, Gary. I thought that was...
Now, people can take it to the land they themselves.
Oh, they can, yeah.
But they have to show proof where they dispose of them lawfully, right?
There's some proof.
I know what we, I mean, I, you know, what you did there.
Can I ask you one more question, sir? Have you approached the fiscal court to get a raise on the rates?
Since I've been with Apple Valley since April, no. Our rates aren't set by the court system.
Prior to that, though?
And the franchise, they have to raise that.
And I'll say, our rates are the lowest in the area. I think the Gotham County's up seventeen dollars. We do a little bit of business right along the Lawrence County border, and their rates are sixteen dollars an hour.
And you based that on how many customers, sir?
Pardon?
How many customers in Johnson County? Residential and commercial together?
Um, about six thousand accounts.
So it's almost a third more than Martin County.
My Chris was saying, if you take twelve, twelve dollars a month, with forty-five hundred a month, that's six hundred fifty thousand dollars a year.
If someone come in, they want the five percent, I'm like, "Yeah."
Can I ask you another question? What would you, what would you say is your, is your particip, is your participating rate? Yeah, people who...
Um, I would probably say eighty percent, maybe.
Eighty percent.
Seventy-five, eighty percent.
Okay, but you do have people, if they do get in arrears, they do come in and, you know, make it up, right? I think we did talk about that.
Yeah, we suspend, I mean, if somebody's, you know, ninety days out, and we don't pick up their garbage. You know, usually that gets people back in your work with a chat and pay. But if they go a couple of weeks, then, then they'll get a letter.
Are you interested in your franchise in the commercial? You're already doing it.
Yeah, we're doing a lot of it, and, you know, the main reason for that is it didn't require us purchasing any more equipment. You know, I have one front-load truck that can service all of Johnson County in a matter of a couple of days, which leaves a couple of days...
And you all handled the commercial here for how many years, sir?
Uh, we've been over here for a while.
That guy's an excellent worker, too. He sure is. He's a good guy.
Has anybody ever thought about, just like they do at Tennessee, putting in recycling? People that bring their garbage in, they got to recycle your cans, plastics, laws, and then there's a person comes and buys it.
Yeah, they do that a lot.
Well, I think, okay.
I can speak briefly on the recycling. We actually had a recycling center for a while. We actually would rip open the bags and separate everything out. Right now, the price that you would get for recyclables is really, really low. You know, I can send off several, you know, a couple thousand pounds of metal even and get thirty-five dollars for a load. That's not even covering my cost of hauling it, so...
They also, where I've got a farm in Tennessee, they burn what they can, and they produce plate crusty with it from the county. But again, Victor, or either one of you, would you all post it in the paper what state requires, not just for a county, but for an individual, for disposing of their garbage? And it needs to be done right. You know, I'm not one that likes seeing places all piled up with garbage. But like I say, you know, I don't care to tell people. I burn my stuff. It don't bother me. I use ashes, I put it on my garden, it raises the potash in the sun.
Raise good gardens. I think as far as Kentucky, I don't think you're allowed to burn household garbage.
You're allowed to burn, you're not allowed to burn...
Right, here's a paper on it.
I'm allowed to burn plastics and stuff like that. You can burn cardboard or paper. I've got, I picked up the paperwork from the EPA, asking them to distribute it to some office.
Dick Young's got a paper on that.
I'm sorry, Johnny. You're allowed to burn paper. You're allowed to burn paper. You're not allowed to burn rubber and...
Plastic.
You burn wood.
Dick, you've got the paper.
I've talked briefly with the Kentucky EPA Division of Air Quality. Of course, they're making changeovers down there now, you know? We've got a, got a new man to helm as Kentucky EPA, with Martin County fellow. But anyway, small incinerators are permissible, permissible. They're, they're permissible, not, of course, permissible. Don't know all the details yet, because like I said, they're in a changeover down there and...
But there's permitting processes and everything you've got to go through.
There's a permitting process, but there's different, the permitting process is different for these small units. You're talking about...
Still, you've got to go through the permitting process, and the state's got to prove it.
That's, that's true, but you don't have all the restrictions on these small home units or, or neighborhood, because, you know, they'll burn so many tons or so many tons, so many pounds an hour, you know? We're not talking about a two-hundred-ton an hour thing. We're not talking about anything like that.
So you're saying that's free?
Free.
Free?
Free.
Free? I said, free. You said household incinerator, so you'd have to buy your own incinerator.
Everything has a cost. We understand that. Everything has a cost, but it's, the, the desire is to diminish the cost, to try to reduce the cost. And we're talking about other means of being able to.
So is there something we could put in the ordinance that you'd be allowed to have a household incinerator permitted by the state?
That is permitted. I mean, I can understand, we don't put something out there that's not permitted, you know.
We have an ordinance, what they call citing requirements for incinerators.
Well, it would have to be, the language.
It's in our ordinance.
The language has to say something, in fact, that it was being compliant with Kentucky's permitting law.
Yeah, you'd have, yeah, you'd have to be permitted by the state and everything.
Yeah, the unit would have to be permitted. I'm, I'm kind of curious what your timeframe is on money. I don't know when you're going to run out of money, but you've got a, what, what's the urgency of this?
I don't know about that. I'm talking about the site. You said about incinerators, we have that in our previous orders. Incinerators is as, you know, they have to be permitted by the state, they have to comply with federal state laws. I, I don't know what that entails, Dick, and how much you'd be out. I don't think you could tell us that.
They told me, one guy told me one day, there's different, uh, regulations for different size.
I agree.
Incinerators, so we, we're not, the, the big incinerators up on the hill up there, so we don't fool with that, but.
It's kind of gasification, but they're running.
Yeah, I think it's about to run.
I'd put taxes on them so high enough that they wouldn't be.
It's about to run. I think they're getting ready to dismantle the thing. You know, you, you tell them to set it in. Take it apart right now.
I don't know what it costs.
But as far as the money, you know, you were in the last meeting when we had, you know, uh, the projector up here and had all the information upon there, so, you know, the time is now, we've already lost the money.
They are not, they're not dismantling that, uh, station up there. They're actually building it up, right now, working on it.
They're dismantling it and building that.
They are putting a new mower in right now.
Wait just a minute. Everybody's right. They're dismantling it to redo.
Rebuild it.
Make it, to rebuild it.
Make an operation, one will be on the line. I, I, now it's not an operation. I'm not the sheriff's tool and shed, guys, but from what I've seen, here tonight, and what I've seen, you know, because people talk to me about it, I, you know, just like they do you all, I'm sitting here looking at three men that are in the garbage hauling business right here tonight. Right there's one, there's Mr. Vanover, Joey Indycott, and the man back there in the corner. All right? It's my understanding that Kenny's interested in getting into the garbage business. I guarantee you that any of these men or anybody else that's in the garbage business, if you all will look at them and say, I, we will collect the money, the money will come to us, and if the money don't come to us, we will prosecute them. As sheriff, I'll be the man serving the papers on, okay? That's my job to do, I don't care to do it. I really believe that would be the simplest thing to do, is just, just say, hey, we're going to collect it and we're going to turn the money over to whoever we give this to. I mean, I, I mean, it's going to take some backbone on our behalf, you know what I'm saying? Then he gonna be politically correct on these people that don't want to pay their garbage.
But, and it would help with the jobs.
But it's not fair for one man to pay his garbage and the other man not to.
And I, and I agree with the jobs here, Mark County helped Mark County, all of that, everybody helped.
You know, we've been enforcing, and Kenus will tell you, we're, we're citing these people, when we go out on other calls, if we're there on a drug call, we're on a dog call, and we find a bunch of garbage laying there, and we cite these people. Kenus has been prosecuting these people, okay? They're cleaning up, they're clean, we give them so many days to clean it up, we go back and investigate if it's not cleaned up, then Kenus says, all right, we're fine. I mean, I believe if we're willing, if we're all willing to do it, I, I believe that the people's going to say, hey, man, I, I realize we're broke, we're going to have to do something.
I've never seen it on police reports, just, I don't know.
Forty-five hundred.
Bust somebody, they're baiting, they have, they're, make it bad.
What I'm afraid, what I'm afraid is going to happen is if we don't. I don't think we're going to get anybody to come in here, guys, if, if, because there's going to be some people that's saying they're going to pay it, and they're going to say, I know John Herman, I know Kenus, or I know Kelly, that'll help me, you know what I'm saying? I think that we're going to have to just buckle down and say, listen, we will collect the money, the money's going to come here, this is what's going to happen. We know who all these residents are.
Correct me if I'm wrong, first, didn't we try, didn't you all try to do that and put it on the water bill? Was it not a wrong?
That's the thing about this, everybody don't have city water.
But if, even if.
Don't have a, a water.
The twelve dollars a month, let's say forty-five hundred residents, even if twenty percent of people don't pay it, you're still looking at five-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars a year.
But you make them pay.
You have to put the money in the hand of somebody that wants to spend it on something else. It's like being owed tax.
Like he said, how much is it worth to someone to come in here, even if he's guaranteed a payment? I think the man just told you, didn't you, sir?
About six hundred thousand.
Even if they're guaranteed payment, what they tell us, sir.
Guys, we have somebody, we have somebody recognized back here?
One other.
Yeah, I'd like to say I'm a thin concentration, and I'd like to bring up a few points. One, Mr., I don't know what your name, okay, he has got all of Johnson County, okay, so I want you to remember that. He's got, he's got it all, okay? His price, that he's, and his rate, he's capable to give a good rate because he's got the whole county. Now, you take a small company like me, that I'm doing Lawrence County, I can't compete with his rate, okay? So if you all decide to let three or four other guys come in here and do it, you need to keep that in mind, that you need to set the rate to the point that the garbage man can make money, but you're not breaking up the resident, okay? And my suggestion to another part of it, and I was mentioning it to several different one of yous, I feel, and I would like to see, and I'm trying to get them to do it in Lawrence County, some of the masterpieces in Lawrence County want to do it this way, some of them don't, some of the garbage men don't want to do it this way, and it's because they've already got the cream of the crop, okay? And if you ain't got a lot of cream, then you have, you have to struggle to, to collect money and to make money. If you zone it out and you put one garbage hauler to a zone.
Franchise, so that makes sense.
Then, then if a person don't pay a bill, okay, then when I drop them and I call, call this man and then he calls that man, they pick me up real quick, promise you, they'll pick me up real quick, especially when pines are coming their legs. And speaking of their legs, I've got two women that I pick up garbage for, and me as a man that has a heart, I refuse to charge them people because they have very limited bags of garbage, and it don't weigh nothing. And I've said that all along, if they break me up in Lawrence County picking up that woman's garbage, then I've got a major problem.
That's condition.
And I go as far as going one of them's house and get her garbage, but I also know her personally. I can't do that for her person, but I do it for as many as I can.
Well, does Lawrence County franchise theirs out, or do they not let anybody haul for?
No, they don't let, just you, you have to be approved by permits.
Then you can haul anywhere, but they don't have a specific area.
I can haul anywhere I want to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Any dump I want, I've got dump receipts here.
And you said that makes a mess out of it, though, right?
That's what you were just saying.
What's, what makes a mess out of it? Where, not being zoned, yes, it, it makes a very big mess, because if, this is the problem that it causes, I'm sure he can speak for it. If you have three or four haulers in one area, what you'll have is if one resident will pick me up for a while, she'll run a major bill, or he, and then they'll drop, and then they'll go to him, and that's a very big problem in Lawrence County right now. And I'm fighting with them tooth and nail down there to get them to, to just correct some of the problems. And also, you have a lack of accountability and tracking. Is that, is that the case, when you have everybody going in all different directions?
Right.
You don't know if this resident's getting their garbage picked up or not, but if you had the same number of residents in a district or a zone, and that was the only person responsible for that district resolve, you could track who's paying, who's not, and who's not disposing of the garbage correctly.
I asked you another question, sir. In Lawrence County, where you all just do it by permits, you don't have the same rates either, do you, the haulers do?
No, the rate is set by, yes, it is the same rate. The rate is set by the fiscal court, okay?
So you have franchise, that's what I'm saying. You have a franchise, but you can haul anywhere. And you're saying the best way, best, to.
This is what happened, let, let me explain what happened in Lawrence County. A few years ago, they, they had several different garbage haulers that, and it was zoned out, okay? And they had a few of them get sick, if I'm right. And they stepped out of the garbage business. When they done that, they had a lot of residents that didn't have garbage service, so when they called the judge, the judge would say, I'll send the garbage man your way, and it kind of got disorganized. And they talked about correcting their problem down there. Matter of fact, they were supposed to have a meeting a while back, and they, they died having it because of some other reasons, but they're eventually going to have to correct that problem that they've got.
And you all take a word to.
I, I take mine to Big Run.
Yeah, you have to haul them to landfill somewhere.
And the, the county can call down there every so often and ask them, Indycott sanitation, how many tons of garbage has he dumped in the last X amount of months?
They don't require you to, they don't require, they don't approve, they don't record.
I, I keep receipts, I walked them in a while back to the judge and he said, hey, you don't bring, because I, I've only been in this for a while, I've not been in it as long as what Apple Valley's been. I'm just not getting, getting my feet with, but I've been at it long enough to figure out a few things. Okay, this is costing me money, this is costing me money, this is saving me money. But I walked the receipts into the county judge and he said, hey, I don't have to have them, you don't have to bring them here, it's in the paperwork that you bring them here, but with today's electronics, I can call down there and get your weight every time I need it. And that's what they did.
How many homes do you service, Mr.?
Uh, in a week's time, with a box truck that's sixteen foot long, and this is something else that you need to keep in mind, you can't let these guys go down the road in a pickup truck with a chain link fence around it for this reason. If you let them go down the road doing that, and then the D O T or the Sheriff's Department or the State Police pull in behind them, then they're going to start parking their cars and having somebody come tow their vehicle in because it's not a code for the D O T. So it needs to be a box truck or a closed truck of some kind, and for that reason, I'm not letting. All the garbage being in the lower area, because if you have one lead from here and go down twenty-three, and go to one of them landfills and he's dumping garbage everywhere, then the State Police and the D O T's going to start running that road hot and heavy.
So how many homes, did you say now, in a sixteen-foot box?
I can do, in a sixteen-foot box truck, I can do roughly in a six-day week, or was it a five-day week? Six-day week, I can do roughly a, a thousand homes in a week. That's a rough estimate. It's according to how many, how dirty they are and how many residents live in that, living at home.
How many, how many haul, how many franchise haulers you have down Louisiana?
How many do I have?
How many does the county have?
I do not have that number.
Five or six?
They, they, they is, um, I'm roughly just going to say they maybe six. According to their, according to their ordinance, they said they would franchise out four haulers in the ordinance, and then it's ballooned from that. Yeah, yeah. They actually got a wide. I think they got, I think they got roughly six people in Lawrence County, probably, every bit of.
But two, Victor, if you went with like Lawrence County, then the county's going to save the county money because these.
Well, that's what, that's what we just now said as far as what we were trying to do. The thing that we just now suggested doing is basically the same setup as they have in Lawrence County. That's what we just discussed as far as franchising out the commercial part and then doing by district or zones, and you'd have private haulers, you know, like Mr. Vanover here that could be an in and haul in those districts or those zones. That's the only way you have accountability and.
They create jobs, give Mark County boys a chance to make a little money.
The transfer station.
We need videos.
Need those out to be late or what?
They don't have a transfer. They pick it up.
Lawrence County has one transfer station, and this is how they, this is how they partly fund it. I don't think it's completely funded this way, but this is how they partly do it. You pull in there in a pickup truck, according to the size of the load that you got, because they've not got scales, according to the size of the load that's on that truck, what type of material it is, then they charge you a fee.
So they go by cubic yards, basically.
If you come in with a truck and trailer, then the price goes way up and they take in consideration what's on the truck, what's on the trailer.
Who hauls it off for them often there?
No house of garbage whatsoever.
Who hauls it off?
The county does.
The county has.
The county hauls that off, but that's what, they have to wash that ten-dollar merge. I'm going to say it's up around, because I, I ain't, I ain't hauled stuff off in a long time down there to them, uh, to know what their rate is. But they charge, they charge a rate per pickup truck load, and that's how they afford to be able to pay for it to go down there, is by charging a fee.
But that's for non-household garbage.
That's non-household garbage. Non-household, or anything household garbage kept, anything in a garbage.
But everything household and commercial is actually.
Franchised out and picked up in.
Let me ask you a question. If, if this incinerator was open up here and you could haul your garbage.
I'd haul it for a heartbeat.
Everybody would.
Okay. All right. If that incinerator was open, we could get ours to it for free.
Okay, okay.
But he's got his hand up right here.
Yeah, that's right, go ahead.
Okay. You said there's accountability problem?
No, I'm just saying, I would say I'm saying. I'm saying accountability.
Has anybody here been around their hills, rode in a four-wheeler or a side side?
It's bad now.
Let me tell you something, we've always had an accountability problem. They will not prosecute nobody here. How do I know that? This man right here, the last three days, the rest of the same guy for stealing, and he beat him out and everything.
They have a right to show.
Yeah, but you take plea bargain and then, and then act like they, they.
Has, has we ever dismissed a case on littering?
Well, I'm here to tell you, Daniel Lowe's done twenty things right here in the last forty minutes. In three months, Daniel Lowe has sold more stuff and they caught him away, man, we've got accountability problem, Kenus.
Criminal case, right?
Right here, have y'all ever tried to get a hold of Jeff Hoops that owns Martiki? I guarantee you, if you will call him, we can start our own landfill here, and if you haul stuff down here to Republic Capital down on Industrial Park, it costs the guy that brings it in there twenty dollars a ton. I know. I've had a haul there. This man right here can tell you that owns Apple Valley. I don't blame him a bit for wanting his money up front, because every year, he has to pay about thirty-two hundred dollars for each man for compensation. His insurance liability, I'd say, is about thirty thousand dollars a month or a year, all depends on how much equipment he's got. If he blows one tire out, that's four hundred seventy-five dollars. If we want to do what's best for the county, let's make sure that if we got somebody, let's hold them accountable. If they're not pulling their share, hold them accountable.
You can revoke their franchise.
Well. We're talking about people picking it up.
I'm just saying in order to track. So if you have people on everywhere, you can't track who.
Even when you sell eight-bon, you have districts.
Well, take it, make it. These haulers.
I keep, I like tracking is a bookkeeping thing, that's easy.
Yes, that's what I was. Yeah, that's easy. If you haul down there at Republic Capital, that guy I tell you right there from Apple Valley, the truck number, the driver's number, his driver's license, the check number, the weight, empty, uh, coming out, a load going in, and he pays exactly what, uh, he hauls in there. And he has to pay that right then and there that day. Uh, you don't get, uh, he, he might be big enough that he gets a charge. But now, when you, uh, go down there, I know for a fact, by the end of that day, that check has to be there. If you haul three loads and one load, that check has to be in there. But let's make sure if we're going to do this, because we've had people that had stuff that's got out of their garbage, their names and everything, and they've not been prosecuted. Let's be, let's be right. If we're going to be truthful, let's be truthful.
Look at the court records, I think this man can tell you, he just told me a while ago.
Yeah, since John Herman got in there, he will, so we, we ain't never had no law to do anything.
Well, you've got him bringing it in, and guess what? Have we thrown out a case, John?
Not a littering case.
No, I'm here to.
How much jail time did he really?
Community service. They're one down here picking up this thirty.
We need to exhaust everything before we just go to a rational thing and just come here and say.
They get to pick up more than they threw out.
But I'll get you all the time with Jeff Hoops if y'all want to.
Do what's your program, community service.
Like, for instance, there was, there was a boy that was going around to some of these garages and he's picking up their tires, and he's probably getting ten or twelve dollars a load to haul off their tires, and they's coming out doing it, because when, when they take their, your tire off your car, they're charging you two dollars, three dollars, whatever it is. So, so they can hard him to haul off a whole load, because they got to dispose of those tires. I mean, they're supposed to have paperwork showing where they disposed of them legally. So this boy was going around, he's picking them up, and I started watching him. Every three, four days a week, I see him hauling tires and I started getting a number, following him, trying to narrow it down where he was going. Some went down on six forty-five, someone up Davis Branch up to Harold Porter's property. So Harold calls me, he gets a picture of the vehicle, gets pictures of the tires, and he said, John, I need you to find out who's doing this. So I, I run it, comes back to the boy and he's at him. I go to that boy, I said, now here's the deal, buddy. You've got so many days to pick that up, or I'm gonna do one for your list. He didn't go pick it up, went to Kenus, got a warrant for his arrest, okay? When he come to court, Kenus asked me, said, what you wanna do with him? I said, I want him to pick up that garbage and a lot more too. He got a hundred and sixty hours of community service. It took him, it took him about thirty minutes, him and another boy on the community service to go up there and pick up the tires that he took up Harold Porter's, okay? He picked those up, plus he had to do, like I said, another, he had a hundred and sixty hours. So he got out here to cut brush, he's wanting to help cut the grass around his courthouse. That, you need to set the example to these people. There's gotta be consequences for doing illegal stuff. I don't know if y'all have seen me or not, but every time that I find a bag of garbage laying beside the road or thrown all over the road, I will stop there, I'll go through there. I have went to people. Got right down here a mile, okay? Fine man, he just, he, he don't have a lot of time on his hands. He, he lets his garbage build up on the back of his truck to where it's that high above the top and then when he tries to come up six forty-five, three or four bags blows off, it goes all over the place. I go through, I find his, find his address and stuff, I go tell him, so listen, I will give you until tomorrow evening, it'll be twenty-four hours to pick this garbage up, or I'm gonna change it for a warrant for your arrest. Trust me. He picked up that garbage plus all the rest of the garbage that was laying in about a five hundred foot register there. I would usually paint a line on the road, say, listen, you need to pick up the garbage from here to here. If not, then I will, you know. And the thing about this is, after a while, he's gonna quit, he's gonna quit letting this garbage pile up so high. But as far as, as far as, since I've been sheriff, Kenus has worked, I couldn't ask Kenus to work no better with me. I mean, he's, he's went above. This community service program, guys, is awesome. Just look up there to all the schools, every one of your parks, every name that we had a contract out before to get the grass mowed here, senior citizens, nine-one-one center, all the parks. All these people who, I catch for littering, I catch for whatever it may be, they're out here doing this. And, 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 and these guys right here, you know what I'm saying? They, you know, they got a furniture truck to do it with, they got a, they got a.
That's saving them guilt.
Right, we're not taking for them to lay over and do nothing. We're saving them what they're making.
It's saving money for the parks and stuff that's costing somebody to mow it. Now, see, I agree with that. You know, drugs, to me, you let them work and they realize what they've done, they don't think twice.
They don't have time, they didn't mean to stay waiting eight hours.
That's right, and I agree.
Up here today, we had them up here to the, to the high school. I talked to a lady that works at the high school, she said, buddy, she says, those fellows really worked, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And then we go out and we brag on them, say, guys, you're doing a good job.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, we, we can, we can make money, I mean, I, trust me, guys, I don't wanna have to pay nothing. I really don't wanna pay nothing, okay? But.
Well, we're gonna have to.
We're gonna have to, and I don't care to pay. I really don't, and I, and I have stated that ever since, every time the garbage has been brought up, have I not said I did not care to pay?
Gentlemen, you've heard the discussions, different ways you tell the same.
I think the Martin County, if you give them districts like Avon, you know, because I sell fiber lashes, I can't go out of my district. We don't sell lashes, we can do that.
I'm permitted down there, I already got the number. What would the fiscal board pay me and I'll go get the truck? What will y'all come up with the numbers? I'm here to.
I need a job.
If, if you all sincere about it. It's all, you can get work out of county anyway, but what will you all pay me and, and if I go buy the trucks and haul the garbage down here and to Republic Capital down here on Industrial Park?
Are you talking about what kind of rate they'd set for the people to pay or?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll figure it out, and that way.
You can, you can franchise it out commercial, you can franchise out residential, like that man told you. Y'all tell us how you want it done with a.
I'll, I'll, I'll figure it out.
The ordinance is great, just like you said.
Yeah, but you said you wanted to do business, so maybe in March. What did it come to?
The primary year. Let me ask you a question. If, if, if this incinerator up here ever goes, if it ever goes, and say, these guys, some of these guys are, or five of these guys all have, if they're, they're picking up garbage, okay? Will they be allowed to haul that garbage up there for a charge?
Yeah.
I mean, because they're supposed to take their garbage.
The contract we have with them states that they'll take Martin County garbage for no charge and we would receive from any other tip any six percent.
But, but they would, what I'm saying is, these guys would, if, if it ever came to, to be in, I mean, and they would be, if they were.
Martin County, they can haul it to break. What kind of timeframe are you all putting on those on the incinerator up there to either get it running or get off the ground?
It's up to them, the state, the county government has to prove.
These two guys talk to them up there. These, these guys.
I'm saying it's theirs. They will take theirs. We don't know the property. We have a contract. They don't, we have.
We had the broom doing the test on it, but it's not a scam.
You know, the only thing that worries me about the incinerator wrong, the thing that worries me about the incinerator is, you know, if they're in the garbage business, that's good. But if they're in the technology business and they're up there just developing technology and patents that they wanna sell to other people, then, you know, it'll help us anything, don't they household garbage?
That's already done.
They household garbage, then it's gonna benefit us.
Lead them to where they have to do something, where they have to make it.
Guys, that's a private company, we can't say, they're, they're saying, oh, you're gonna put us in an incinerator, same way.
We can't hear though, you're saying that.
We're just saying we're gonna dispose of the garbage.
The court's trying to give you an option, that's why they want people in.
Private enterprise is different, we can't control what they do. I mean, they're putting millions of dollars into that place, it ain't like they don't want it to work, they, they want it to run.
Can you get one of the representatives to come to the next meeting?
I just talked to one, who did you talk to?
From the incinerator up there.
Hey, we just talking about.
Can they be here before they tell you which.
Tell us how you wanna do it.
Just show them.
Let me ask you guys, Indycock guy.
Joey.
Joey.
That's who you need to listen to. Lawrence County is bigger than our county, Kelly, and they're working it like that, and the county is not bothered with it.
So the court set your all the rate for you.
If it's a franchise, they can.
But it also says in the ordinance, you can negotiate the price.
How do you, how do they pick? Who picks up the garbage then?
They, back several year ago, as a matter of fact, it was the guy that I took over was the one that started the garbage service in Lawrence County, and this was thirty-two years ago. That was for thirty-two, thirty-two years, and part of it was while I was living, my mom and daddy, he was our garbage man. Thirty-two year ago, he started this garbage service before it was set up that you had to have a garbage service. Okay, over the years, it's expanded. Okay? My advice to you, so that I can see to it that I get paid, so that he can see to it that he gets paid, whoever you have come in here, zone it out. Put one guy to a zone. Make it equal amount of customers, okay? According to how, if I, if, say if he only wants, so many, say he only wants a thousand customers, okay? Give him a thousand customers, give him a thousand customers and the same amount of spread out zone, okay? Where he ain't having to drive so far, but he's still making the same amount of money that I make it.
Say we do that. And we set the rate, y'all was sixteen seventy-five, I know it had to be a little more for you guys to be profitable here, it's a little farther. But say that we had two transfer stations operated by a private individual that was charging people to come in there. Would that still be profitable to you?
Uh, if he was, if he was taking in garbage.
He can take in your garbage as well.
You can pay your tipping fee.
If I can pay my tipping fee, yeah, it might be, but it's according, I mean, but he, he, he's gotta charge close to the same rate that I charge.
Yeah, that would probably, probably be more than what the rate y'all would be set. But what I don't understand about the system, you know, we were sitting down in Lexington the other day and a judge come by and he said, everything's working good. Then one of the masters come by and said, they're gonna zone it.
It's a mess.
It's a mess. The way it is.
You talk to different people in Martin County, talk to different masters down there, each one of them's got a different idea of how they want it to go. You talk to me and him, we'll probably have one idea. You talk to Dennis Markham, who's down there, who's been in there just as long as the guy that I took over, okay? He's, he's done weeded through all the bad customers. He don't wanna give up his good customers. So does he want it to be zoned out? No. He don't want it to be zoned out, because he's got the cream of the crop. Okay? He told the judge the other day, he said, I don't want you to zone it out for one reason. If a customer lives five miles up a hauler and he's the only house up there, I don't wanna have to go get it. Okay, but this is what happens. If you zone it out, then I can look at that customer and say, listen, I can't afford to come all the way up there, but this is what I'm gonna have you do. Set your garbage bin with your household number on the bin with your nine-one-one residence on the bin. You set it at the mouth of a hauler and I'll pick your garbage up just same as if it was at your house. And then if you made everybody in Martin County with a nine-one-one address take garbage service, nobody's gonna sneak and put garbage in his bins, because they done got garbage service at their home.
That's the way, that's the only way it could be, is door to door, everyone participate.
Right. If, if we have a transfer station where people won't pay as they go, they would have that option. Because, you know.
How would we keep track?
Yeah, but they're, they're still, they're still gonna have to be showed, they're still gonna have to show the county that I'm paying a garbage bill. Whether I'm picking it up or.
Let me ask you, sir, what you're saying is, if the county divided up like the managers, because we have five managers here. They each one have district. If we franchise each district, people could vote on maybe even more than one district, is that not correct?
Here's the only thing that's, each district has roughly eleven hundred households in it, okay? But the thing is, is you look at, for example, they mentioned District Four, okay? District Four has those eleven hundred households spread out in an area, you know, almost thirty-three percent the size of Martin County. So you look at District Five, which is my district, you've got eleven hundred homes that's concentrated in a small area, and that would be what you would consider
Cream.
the cream of the crop.
Right.
So we would have to try to fix it in a way that you could split up those larger areas that would be.
Lawrence County's zoning, okay? You got the district manager down there, and then you've also got the garbage zone. It's, Lawrence County's already zoned. They fell away from it because of people going out of business and it, and the businesses wouldn't change, didn't change hands the way it should've changed.
They divided it up before it was zoned.
They, they sold it, matter of fact, there was one guy coming in there and he decided to go out in order to get as much money as he could. He sold half his company to one guy, half his company to another guy, and he got more money out selling his business, okay? And you all, you all, when you do this, don't let a garbage man do that. If he no longer wants to pick up garbage, sell his equipment at the price that his equipment is of the value of his equipment. You cannot sell a customer. I can't sell you a customer walking through Walmart's doors. He's a customer.
Well, zoning would take care of that problem.
Right.
So let me ask you this, and then I'll get to you. It's sixteen seventy-five in Lawrence County.
And it's due to go up. It, it's not been raised in over seven years down there, I think, is that not right?
It ain't twelve something.
No, it's the price, the price, yes, the price is twelve something for senior citizens. Uh, it's sixteen something for residents. They're supposed to have already, they're supposed to every two years, look at the cost of fuel, the cost of, the, uh, of labor, which minimum wage has went up. Okay, so that's one reason why Lawrence County needs to look at, yeah, fuel has went down, but the cost of labor has went up, and the tipping fee has went up. And they've not raised their price since several years. If they don't make a correction to that in a, in a, in a certain amount of time, then people like me are gonna be looking to go out of business.
Did you pay Lawrence County a tipping fee or just a?
No, I don't pay Lawrence County nothing.
So what would you think the price would be here?
They're very double.
Hey, Kelly, if they charge, if you got fifty-five hundred residents, just like you said, that's a million and fifty-six thousand dollars a year. You take twenty percent, that, that's still eight hundred and some thousand dollars a year.
At sixteen dollars per month.
At sixteen.
Sixteen dollars.
Now, but you have a fuel bill.
I know, but we're saying what, what, what the total bill is gonna bring in.
It could cost us.
See, also just stated, Apple Valley just stated, they only have seventy-five percent collection rate.
Well, I said, take twenty percent, that's still eight hundred and some thousand dollars a year.
No, Lawrence County, he collects his own.
We collect their own.
I collect my own, I collect money. Martin County don't touch the money back.
What he's saying is, it would be up to them to enforce that.
Those are allowed, twenty percent.
Right. But this is my, roughly, this is my expense, and this is roughly coming off the top of my head. I got a fuel expense, I've got labor expense, I've got a tipping fee, I've got wear and tear on my truck, I've got a truck payment, and I've got insurance. No, no, let's, listen, that's not, give me time and I'll give you a price. I'm saying Lawrence County's getting ready to raise their price for one. It's gonna be roughly, it's gonna be roughly, and it's according to how many customers you give each garbage man.
Sixteen seventy-five.
It's gonna be anywhere from sixteen to twenty dollars. And I'm, and I'm gonna tell you something.
That's you taking it all the way to the.
I'll take it all the way to Apple Valley. Big round, I mean. You take it, you take it all the way to, to Big Round.
Hey, Dave, let me, let me, you talk. What'd you want to say?
I was gonna say the, if you elect to keep the transfer stations open, then my opinion is, the rate, for anybody to duck there needs to be more than a monthly rate. I don't wanna drive past three houses to choose to take theirs, because that's wasting my.
We can't hear it, guys.
Let me ask you a question.
I can't hear a thing.
Say, say we set the rate, say he set a sixteen seventy-five and it's going to go up, say it was at nineteen seventy-five. Would you all be interested in a, a zone at nineteen seventy-five?
I think the rate sounds good.
Yeah.
I need to look at how many trucks. Each of us would have to look at, you know, how much manpower and how many trucks is it gonna take to accomplish that, that task? You know, and coming back to me, it's all about the fleet, you know? If I have an extra used truck on my lot that I can afford to bring out, you know, then I wouldn't have to go out and buy a new truck. You know, so could I accomplish picking up that zone with one truck, hiring one person to drive that truck?
Let me ask you, you, you all picking up most of the commercial now, is that not correct?
We're picking up a good chunk, yeah.
How, how many trucks and men do you actually?
For that commercial, it's one guy, one truck, and it was a truck that we already owned to pick up Johnson County.
So say, say you're still interested in bidding on the commercial for the whole truck.
Yeah.
What would, what would you do on your bids if you didn't have to pay a tipping fee? You didn't have to pay a tipping fee, if the plants open up the hill up here?
If it's open, then they could.
Then they don't have to pay a tipping fee, is that right?
The tipping, listen, the tipping fee is twenty-four dollars.
Right, right, okay.
Twenty-three seventy-five, what we're paying them.
Okay. If it was open, we would be sitting here at.
Okay, let, let, let this man right here tell you about, about their interview.
All right, T G and I went up there today to talk to one of the co-owners of the plant.
John Burke?
John Burke.
John Burke.
Yeah. He spent about fifteen, twenty minutes with us, about right?
Yeah.
And we were asking questions. He's been looking for and finally found, I guess we wanna call it a boiler unit that withstand the pressure that it's gonna be enduring and last a while. Now, I've heard people saying they would dismantle it and all that kinda stuff, he's right, dismantle it and put a new unit in the center of it that works. Also, there's an afterburner being installed on this thing. EPA's got equipment in the back where the vapors come out checking for pollution. He's been permitted three times, he has a new permit. The problem is, he needs garbage. He's thinking he's gonna have this thing cranked up in July. We don't generate enough garbage in Martin County to keep this equipment running, so he needs something from Lloyd County and Johnson County and maybe other places. And when he gets ready to run this thing and cranks it up, it's got, to keep it running, you gotta have so many tons of garbage per day coming in there.
Six hundred tons.
No, it's four hundred.
Four forty-eight.
Four hundred.
Okay, once that thing cranks up, it's gonna be operated twenty-four seven. He's gotta have a A crew, B crew, C crew, and D crew. And his plan is, at this time, to work two twelve-hour shifts a day, four days would be in A crew, four days in B crew. You'd have a day shift, night shift, and then after he takes time off, he rotates back in. Uh, sounds to me like he's got a good plan. Now, I know he's been experimenting and all this stuff and so on, but we think they've got all the bugs worked out of him.
What can I, can I say this, Ernie?
Yeah.
All due respect, they have been to the county so many times, and they said, August, we're gonna have it ready.
Okay.
May, we're gonna have it ready. Next July, we're gonna have it ready. I mean, I mean, we have heard that story many times. You know, if they have it lift right now, that would be the best thing for Martin County to ever happen.
I think the gentleman from Apple Valley loved, he's dying to comment on this.
I just have a question about the incinerator. I mean, even if it was free, what happens when it breaks down? And your only other choice is to go to.
Would you not haul it there? That car would be.
The locations are definitely appealing.
They're, they're.
If it works.
If they have to shut it down for months, they won't have to stockpile garbage.
How many years have they?
But, whenever it cranks back up, then they don't wanna shut it down unless they have to, because it costs them money to shut it down and start it back up.
I'm sorry, Ernie, I.
Yeah, two thousand one, I believe.
Yeah, we have stockpile. But they've been up there since two thousand one, they have, came before us and said.
And they told us they would have an operation, we'd love for it, because this county would get over and unreeled it.
Well, they sound kinda confident today. They did every time I talked.
How many times you been here?
And in the contract, in the contract, Ernie, we gave them permission to take garbage from all those other people, because they're gonna pay us six percent. All, all those tipping fees that come in there, so.
I understand that. I went and watched them do two test burns. And the first one, they, they missed their, you know, what it's supposed to be for the EPA, by about three, one, three millions or something like that, it's just a, just real, real close. Then they worked on it a little bit, done another one, and it passed, and then they've done another one, basically, since then. And they, and, but last year, me and Gary Hunt and John Harmon went up and talked to them about a week before the July meeting, because we were getting ready to have this problem with the garbage. And they said, we, no, they're supposed to get to next month.
Told us the month.
The next month is when we operate, no problem, everyone will say. Then about, then about a month after that, we went and talked to them, and they said in three months. And then, then they said it might be next year, we may turn it down and build it three times bigger. Now, that's what they said at that time.
The previous fiscal report.
If it work, it sounds wonderful, but I don't have confidence in what they're saying, because, because they misled us so many times. If it work, it sounds wonderful, but I don't have confidence in what they're saying, because, because they misled us so many times. But you'll find out in July, won't you?
Yeah. The previous fiscal report had a contract with that outfit to take our garbage up there for forty-nine fifty a ton, more than we were paying to take it down there. We brought them back to the table, uh, when I first got laid, in two thousand and three, and we renegotiated. They said they'd take our garbage for free, they give us six percent. Now, I thought, well, we're doing good. And you know, I started thinking about it, you know, why was that so easy? Maybe they're not even gonna be in the solid waste business, maybe they're gonna be in the technology business. So if they're just in the technology business, they're gonna do test burns all the time, bring people in, and do test burns, and sell the technology and the patents. It's really not gonna help Martin County unless they take and are in the solid waste business. So that's my only concern, is that, are they in the technology business, or are they really in the garbage business? And, you know, we really don't know the answer to that, but, you know, in July, they.
The answer is yes.
Well, the impression I got was.
Yeah, both of them.
How many years?
What if, they do get one, is the garbage fee gonna go down?
That's the question.
Well, it depends how long you franchise, or however the court wants to set it. You can set it whatever time they want.
Well, if the court come up with a way to charge the residents and to take up the fees, and like you said, it, it. What was twenty? But nineteen dollars a household, you're generating a million three hundred thousand a year. If twenty percent don't pay, you're still generating a million forty thousand a year. I mean, what outfit would come in here if you all are gonna collect the fees?
Can I make a comment on that? At the first year, we had a new management in District One. We said sixteen dollars a month, we take that bike garbage. You know what they did? They run him out of, back up to his house, huh?
He didn't have a ticket for his house.
Don't people give him too much questions?
That's part of being a politician, baby.
Well, okay.
They're safe mentality.
I'm steering here, I'm steering here.
Yeah, but you gotta do your jobs.
Well, let me speak, please. I wish you, every time you come here, speak, don't you? Let me speak. Okay, then we come up for eighteen dollars a month, we pick people's garbage up, fifteen dollar a month, you dump it on, clear pit, for senior citizens, it's fine. Nobody would vote for it. And that's why I'm setting you, I'm waiting on anybody else to make something, that's why I can vote on it.
You know, we've been here quite a while. The general needs to tell us.
If you don't believe me, you go check the minutes.
You decide how you wanna do it, and we'll try to draft something and send it to the state to prove. You've heard the comments, great comments, there's good, there's good ideas over there, so you all decide how you wanna.
Let me ask you another question. Mr. Indy caught said, that the fifth court down there set their fee, sixteen seventy-five.
If it's a franchise, you can.
Okay, so it's franchise. All right, so we in Omar County, and we have five districts, and we have three zones. And we have six people wanting, how do you work that?
That's the court's discretion.
I don't know, it's up to you all.
Okay, you bid on it, just like, okay, just like you bid on jobs, you know, when you, uh, when you have something done. Don't we put in the papers, like, bid it on, then we take the cheapest estimate? And then, when you zone this, and I think it'd save a lot of, a lot of trouble, I mean, I'm not sitting where you're at, thank Jesus. But anyway, um, if you zone it, and I think the other garbage person, every franchise, they can be fine for going in somebody else's zone, because that's what happens to me with my fire blasters or my cosmetics, that I sell. If I get caught selling anything out of my district, or in somebody else's, they fine me, that's only fair, you know? And I think, I think it's a good idea, and like the Martin County guys, I think that would create, they're gonna need some boys in the mail. It's gonna create jobs, you know, it's a little baby step, but you all, it's a step, you know what I'm saying?
That's the correct way that you have to do it. Franchising out by districts, if you use District One, Two, Three, Four, Five as it exists now, then you would take bids from those franchisers for District Five. Might be a little cheaper, because like he said, that's the gravy. You do District Four, it might cost you more because of the households being spread out farther.
But it's still, but what I'm saying is.
So you would bid out each district, and that would, you know, you'd have to take the bids.
Yeah, but I have one problem with that. Well, I should be charging one people in Martin County, I probably, I should be charging somebody that's cheaper.
Okay, no, 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 you're not getting what I'm saying. It's the cheapest bidder, now, we're gonna be reasonable here, and I'm a reasonable woman. I can undersell anybody here in Innes for haircut. My men's haircut, Washington style, ten dollars, because of where I'm at, I'm rural. My color is ten to fifteen dollars cheaper than anybody in Innes, and I'm, I'm just as good. Because I can afford that, because I have, I have a place to pay people.
Lower cost.
But what I'm saying is, if you have, yes, people's gonna be upset if they have to pay ten, twenty dollars more than somebody else. A few cents, they're not gonna be that upset. I don't think.
You do the same with my hair.
Yeah, I got waxed. You get what I'm saying? And if, if, if that's gonna be a problem, let everybody pay it. You get what I'm saying, everybody pays the same amount as somebody in, and where was it, District Four, or wherever it was?
Yeah, please tell us something, we try to.
I mean.
I've got a question. Who generates, what generates the most garbage in this county? Jim Booth, correct? He brings more, he brings more garbage there than any, than the whole county, the whole county does.
That's why they're trying to.
School system.
School system.
Whole race more garbage outside.
You're not.
Yeah, we got Apple Valley doing yours right now.
Yeah. That's right.
Well, can I ask a question? The money that's, if you all do this, the money that's collected, uh, who's gonna be in control of the money?
I think. You should be the charge.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think you should be the one who's collecting, you should be the one who's collecting.
Yeah, the only time. Well, let me make a, let me make a comment.
And that would have to disperse.
Well, let me make a comment, okay. I know exactly what it costs down there, it costs twenty dollars a ton to get rid of. I know how much it costs.
No, you're wrong.
I know, I can show you receipts, but let me tell you something. If they take this, if they take this, uh, sixteen dollars a household or whatever, if there's revenue leftovers, you know, I don't think a individual should pay. Let somebody make almost five hundred thousand dollars a year on garbage, if that's the case. You need to take it, check it, and then regulate it, make sure that, you know, they make a profit. But you know, you don't have to go out here and buy new trucks. You can get on, uh, Richie Brothers Auctions. Right now, they're selling six thousand pieces of equipment. You can get these trucks for right around twenty-two thousand to twenty-eight thousand dollars right now. You can get equipment for right around thirty or forty thousand dollars. You don't have to buy a new equipment, you know? We need to make sure that we don't rob the people of this county. You know, this, this county is poor right now. Uh, the coal mines are shutting down, uh, right now, the guy that took over, uh, Martekey, Jeff Hoop, had to lay off his second shift because he can't get permits. He might have to lay the rest of his men off here or service when they get that, uh, Lysima coal out over there, man wrong was just up there. And he said, when that's out, he said, can't go no further, because there's a hundred ten acres of property there that he can't get a permit, and it's blocking him from getting thousands. You know, we gotta make sure that our county, uh, our people in this county is not robbed.
Are they gonna, are they gonna put that being no tax toward the garbage too? That's what it was put there for.
For several things, I think.
But, you know, if it was put, originated from the garbage, why don't they put that in our?
They've been there.
Sixteen eighteen dollars.
Well, if they go, they could put it down. Put it down.
You gotta have enough to start.
We don't even wanna go there wrong, 'cause the county has no money. That being no tax has got to be used.
Well, the people don't have no money either.
Well, no, we don't, but we have to get out of the garbage business, that's the reason we don't have.
They don't shut it down.
Because we're out.
They shut it down, and that is personal.
Let me tell you something, the people ain't gonna like this, the fiscal court ain't gonna like this. Reason why we ain't got no money is because we trust some of these. I bid it on two roads for three thousand dollars. I can't get no business with this county, but right here, Gary Hunt, get thousands, almost ten or twelve thousand for these roads they've bid two or three times. This is what, you want us to be held accountable? You all should be held accountable, yeah.
Okay, now, have I not used you as far as doing work in my?
Now, one time, one time, only time that you, wait a minute. Only time that you used me is when I first got the business, and I done some of my roads. And I was way cheaper than anybody else, because I live here. My tax money takes and pays, uh, helps this county. But I'm here to tell you, after that right there, check your records. Only one gave me work after that is John Harmon. That's the only one, one time.
But when you put tanks on a man's place, or take the tanks to his place, on a twelve-foot right away with sixty feet of tanks?
Okay, we're here for garbage.
And then he, uh.
You know, we're here in town, you said, uh.
Then he charges about fifteen thousand dollars for the, to the county to put them in, and he just puts two in and sells them.
Just get back.
That's what I'm saying about your, your misappropriated money.
So.
That's tank.
You're being on garbage. I don't edit.
Okay, go back, just shut the garbage down, make the people.
The county can take money.
And you pass it down the table.
Pass it down.
You see when he pays a ton to dump that garbage?
Then what happens when the EPA comes in to find the leak?
The county don't relate, county is not even involved, so while our county can't do it, while you guys can't do it, it's beyond me. You all don't fool with it, everyone who picks up that garbage is gonna get the money.
That's what we're saying.
Pass it, pass it.
That's what I'm saying.
It's twenty-four dollars.
Twenty-four dollars.
And what he pays to dump it per ton.
Yes.
That he pays.
How do you want that, franchise or helicopter?
Shut it down, maybe for individuals.
You know, work. The transfer station, I believe they must have paid. You've got transfer stations.
This whole chain operates by weight. What is this? It's okay. It operates by weight.
All you have to do is both to shut them down and you're out of garbage.
And if you, if you calculate the tons, then you know the, you can make it out of garbage. Fifty pounds generates on average, so many pounds of garbage per week. Any control agent gives her, and selling in Lawrence County, it's about eighty pounds. Nationwide, it's about fifty pounds.
I think.
So. And before she got time to get it out, any route, any route, I'll send you a check. Come back if I deal with this cost, if it moves over twice now. Give you forty-five, forty-five thousand dollars, big long cuts with sixteen.
As a suggestion, now, I don't care whether or not, but they said they have a suggestion, and if they want this, Munch and I to start researching on it, try to come up something, something that the state can help prove it, we're doing it.
Well, I, I gave my suggestion, basically, you know, when we say franchise it out, in the beginning, it was for the whole county. Now, the only other option is to possibly franchise the commercial out, uh, and then you would also have to divide up into zones or districts, and then you would franchise those out as well.
Are you wanting?
Or permit those?
Okay, so are you wanting to divide them up in magisterial districts, or are you wanting to combine like four and five, or one, two, and three?
I think we would have to look at the number of households.
I say the magistrate would.
Well, we're saying we have eleven hundred homes per district, correct?
Well, they take four.
I'll take District Four.
How bad are you on that?
Somebody else.
We're saying that we have around.
You said we're talking about doing it like Lawrence County, I assume, is that what?
We have around eleven hundred homes per district. So if we were to do a district, could a private hauler such as yourself, or, or anybody else in Martin County, could they do eleven hundred homes a week?
Yeah.
I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to have.
In a five-day or six-day work week, we can get eleven hundred. We don't wanna overload our haulers to where they can't do their job.
And if you franchise, let me get this commercial, that would take a big burden off of your mountains, that.
I was, wait a minute, you said how many tons?
Wait, he just corrected, he said probably around nine hundred homes.
Nine hundred.
Oh, yeah, I can do, yeah, nine hundreds to a district, I can do, I can do one easily, 'cause that's.
And you could as well, right, right.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna overload, if you're doing this, I don't wanna put too much burden.
And there's some rural towns in our, in our district, aren't they, Darrell? There's some people.
Everybody, everybody.
Yeah, I mean, there's some people that, I want the home health, and I mean, a week, no, they couldn't live up there.
We done surveyed, I've probably made, we counted six hundred.
Mr. Van Hove's doing this right now, for fifteen, fifteen dollars, he's got the worst district in the county, he's hoping for that. But he's not.
He's making it free.
He's not hauling, I think, I'll make a big run.
Shut your transfer stations down, if you want our business, shut them down, and then the people will have to do something.
That's what his fans just trying to tell you.
That's why you shut them down, lay your bail off, so you can.
And there's two of them. That's what Josh said, franchise and victory. Darrell, the commercial, they franchise residential and districts.
That's, that's about fine.
Right, districts.
What's the intention?
Yes.
Is that you?
That's what I, I believe it's.
So what you want with?
One hauler per district, one hauler.
Yeah.
Per district, is that correct?
And then a separate, and then a separate franchisee for commercials, that's what we have, one for commercial.
For the whole county commercial.
And then lease transfer station. Do you lease the transfer station?
We would be allowed to, according to that letter.
Is that part of the permit process, I mean, would that be part of the franchise that the commercial person would be bidding on? Do you see, if we franchise out the commercial, do we say, as part of your franchise, you can operate one or two transfer stations?
I don't see how you could not do that.
We need somewhere for, for our residents to take non-household garbage items.
And your franchisees for each district to take.
Correct.
If they so choose.
If they so, yeah, if they choose to.
If they don't, they take it to.
They could take it to Boyd County.
Correct, yes.
I would get a ride up to the mountain.
So what that means is, whenever they submit a bid, and if you decide to take the bids, you can enter into negotiations with the haulers.
For the transfer stations.
Or for each.
Okay, for the districts, right.
And that, I would think the plan would be to get it pretty even, I mean, for all the districts.
Well, that's what they're saying, I think, didn't you say, Darrell, you wanted one for each?
Well, I would say that, but residents are about the same.
Would that be about the same population?
Right, I mean, they're about the same.
Would it be okay?
Population.
Would it be okay for more than one franchisee to have more than one district? Would you all be okay with that?
They may want to, they may want to.
They may have to, I mean, they may not have enough to do all the.
But you would have to have a designated route.
Yeah.
Well, that's what a franchise necessarily is, a franchise says only one person, nobody else.
And that's district.
Per district. And that would be, is that, is that, you understand?
Let me be devil's advocate, I want to close up, I don't bid on.
Nine hundred homes, the commercial person.
Well, you could, you just say, if somebody gets, gets on, you get one, do that same zoning, it doesn't mean he's cheating.
I'm just saying, what if someone doesn't bid on? You know, one person can bid more than bid, it can be, one person can get more than one franchise if they bid.
That's right.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is.
Now, what would we do about the transfer stations? What about later, if that first station's out, and let the contractor call you?
That's what we say. If you find them, if you lease them out, though.
So you pay a tipping fee.
You have to pay whoever got that.
Pay so much of time.
But if you let residents bring them to that, and they pay a different fee, then you're gonna go and cost them less money, and we're gonna make less money, you're gonna, you're gonna hurt us.
If you're gonna do the transfer station, lease them out.
If they wanna bring it up, it needs to be higher.
Want to, or how many ever, you could probably put what you charge so much.
Cause you gotta be able to cover the cost of your.
Lawrence County won't let them dump their.
No household, no household garbage. That's still.
Not on household, no.
I'm using a household.
Unless it would be, you know, probably, they could do out of state or out of county, uh, and that would boost the revenue. They could charge the rate higher rate.
Whoever you all leased it to.
Yes, yes, like in West Virginia, they could charge them a higher rate to be allowed to dump at their facility, that would else boost their, you know.
So you go franchise the commercial, franchise the residential, and franchise the transfer station.
When you pay franchise, are you making it universal, or are you making it managed?
It's up to the court.
Transfer station.
Universal, you still have franchises, and each, each resident would have to participate. And each, each resident would have to participate.
So, on the transfer station, if you're gonna offer the transfer station, are you gonna offer it to the person that gets the commercial? Or are you gonna offer it?
Yes.
Okay. Just only the person who gets the commercial?
And it wouldn't be household, but...
But if they don't want it.
It wouldn't be household.
So they say they don't want it, then what do we do?
Find somebody who does.
Can we franchise it again, lease it again?
Well, you can franchise like, well, you don't have to, you can franchise it separately.
Right.
Franchise the transfer station, see, across the way, the commercial person wanted to bid on that. I don't think anybody can upkeep, I don't think anybody can upkeep two businesses.
What are you gonna allow, you that, here, here's a question too. He said, what are you allowed to dump in the transfer station? He said, no, no household.
Well, if you're gonna do that, you don't really have to pack none of them.
Well, what I was also suggesting is if they wanted to take out a county garbage, to boost the revenue, they could charge them a higher rate to come in and dump at that facility.
So tell us what you want, you wanna do the franchise for the commercial, whole county? Then you wanna franchise residential, I wanna get it right, of each district.
And that's a universal, big.
Okay, and then, let me ask you this, one person could get more than one franchise?
Are you allowing people to self haul?
To bring it themselves. I don't see how you could do that.
Okay, that's what we need to do. So that's mandatory, that's not universal?
No, no, that's mandatory, universal is not.
The only thing that I think about that, if you're gonna have somebody with transfer stations, and, and you've got with people that won't have a bag of garbage a week, that, they would pay a higher rate at the transfer station, but they're not gonna have any garbage. They may take one bag of garbage, they may, may pay three dollars for that bag. But that may be the only, if she has, if a person had another one, it'd be two dollars.
Well, you may be taking out away from the residential, if you're gonna grant a franchise residential, you're saying that that franchisee, that he has the right to pick it up.
At that sense, what the, the Apple Valley guy said, well, go, if you allow the transfer station down here to take residential garbage, then, then what you're gonna have is me and him driving by houses, and we're driving farther. Instead, instead of we going from house to house picking up garbage, when you have us skipping houses, then it's costing us more money. And then, and then you're gonna be, you know, are we as interested?
I'd make everybody pay, and then if they wanted to take it down there and pay to throw it out for steel, let them pay. They pay twice.
I think you should only take bigger stuff that, that the franchise people can't take at the transfer station.
And then, and then...
Put it two ways, do it one way, household garbage, don't run household garbage.
I agree, I agree.
And, and if they're gonna take household garbage, they have to take it from us. I'd be interested in dumping there, I'd be interested in bringing my Lawrence County garbage there. Very interested. Save me a whole lot of wear and tear, and a whole lot of labor time, and a whole lot of fuel.
But whoever runs it would have to charge you more than what you're paying them. That actually...
Yeah.
Because, because they can claim they're hauling.
I can afford to do that, as long as they're not charging me more than what it's costing me in fuel and labor, and wear and tear.
Correct, we just have to look at that.
They're gonna charge you, trust me.
Well, I mean, I'd have that option. And that, and if they charge way too much, then I'll take her and go on down the road.
But you could do it, you say you're doing it sixteen something right now, taking it all the way to a landfill.
I'm doing it in Lawrence County at that price, and Lawrence County's, Lawrence County's having to look at raising their price too.
If I'm mistaken, you said residential, you could probably do it in Martin County from seventeen to twenty.
Yeah, yeah, in that price range.
Well, if you was gonna ask him to put a price in, what would you tell him to put in his price?
Don't put me on the spot right now.
If we give a franchise, we'd take bids, Dick.
Gonna bid on it?
Yes.
I, I...
You don't need to talk about it, if you're gonna bid on it later.
Well, no, if you're gonna bid on it, but you're talking about...
Yeah, you could, each franchise would submit a bid to get that franchise.
I understand what you're saying on the bid deal and all like that, but I misunderstood you, I thought you were talking about saying, we'll do this for X number of dollars per house, why?
Well, he said what, we asked him what approximately, he's done the movies and what he would tell. He's bringing it all the way to, now, he's taking it all the way to a landfill.
Yeah, I understand, I know where he's taking all that, but I thought the way you all were asking the questions, that you were asking, what's he charging now, what they're gonna be paying a little bit later, so as to know what to set the fee here to offer as a franchise. And, and, but to see, this is what they also need to take in, in, when you do this. Set your fee now, of what you want it to be. If I can afford to do it, I'll do it. And then every two years, a minimum, every two years.
Come back in.
Come back in and look at the price. And, and reevaluate the cost of fuel, the cost of the dumping fee, and the, and the cost of labor. And adjust your price accordingly. That way you don't have a garbage problem down the road, because listen, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, just a couple bad customers in a certain district, you take so many bad customers in that district, can bankrupt you.
And, and this, and this...
And I'm not gonna come into this business and lose my home.
You, you heard your sheriff too, you put in an ordinance that there's a penalty. I believe the way that every ordinance we see, either the director consign, or the sheriff consign, if they come to court, guess what? If you have a stiff enough penalty, I believe people will pay it rather than a five hundred, anywhere from five hundred dollar fines plus court costs, they'd rather pay for your garbage bill. That would be, that would be in the old history.
I pretty much have all of Route Three in Lawrence County, I have it all to myself. I'm the only guy that runs on Route Three. When somebody on Route Three quits paying me, and I drop them, their, after their garbage sits there for one week, by that weekend, they're calling me, begging me, Joey, please come back and get my garbage, I've got your money.
And that way, Joey...
I've got your money, Joey, come pick it up.
That way you, you don't have the same people running, they're the same customer, you have it franchised out each district.
Mike, can I ask you a question, just for clarity? You're talking about the fiscal court sets the price, and then bids it out?
Franchise, franchise.
How can you set a price and then bid it out?
What you do, a franchise, you're asking for bids on the franchise. Like we did in our bid package, we had a bid package...
Well, then you just bid it out and reject the bids if they come in.
We, we did it, we did our last ordinance, if you remember, we gave them a bid package. Nobody bidded on it, because he just told you why. We had a bid package, don't you remember that?
We would bid on that, Mike.
And nobody bidded on it.
My question was to these people that's gonna bid on it, if, if the fiscal court sets the price...
Well, we, I'm sure you all probably look at every bid, but not most bids, like you...
You're just gonna bid it out, and then if you, if it's too high, you just reject the bids, that's basically what you... What Mike said, he just said for the court to set the price, and then he said he can do it, and then we're talking about...
Of course, they set the price, we're gonna bid it out.
We set the price, we can't bid it.
And the court's gonna either accept it or reject it, that's what we did the other time.
As I understand it, we send out the bids, and we say, this is what you're bidding on. They come back what it is, and then after we open the bids, and they decide who they want to pick for the franchisee, the court enters into a contract with that person, and in that contract, we set the rate.
And say, we take your bid, the whole fee, negotiate that. Yes, that's what we did the other time.
That's what we did.
That's what was in your bid package.
What happens, you get a bid on one district, and don't get a bid on the other?
Then we'll have to negotiate.
Maybe you'll take them out.
Somebody will take it away, but they're trying to do something, trying to show. And you heard him, I guess, you, you may be interested in more than one district, what?
Could be?
Yes.
Yeah, could be.
And Mister Endicott, I'm sure you've...
I'm, I'm interested in it as much as I can afford, and I've got somebody from Martin County that said they would financially back me. Hopefully, they've got enough money to financially back me if I need. But I've also got, I got, I got stuff I can put up for collateral. But, when, when you have me bid on it, what, and, and if you're gonna have me bid on it, then one of the things, if I go in debt to do this...
You're gonna be paid.
I wanna be contracted for a certain, for a certain amount of years, because I don't wanna go bankrupt.
Like you said, two years.
Ah, maybe longer. But, but, but the thing about it is, is if you all maintain control of the price, I can't rip nobody off. But yet, nobody, nobody in the county, if you all make it the mandatory, and it's zoned out, then none of the residents can rip me off.
You won't be in ID, no.
Right.
It has to be a happy medium there, where it's, you know, convenient.
And, and I'm just gonna tell you, the, the, the price that you're going, that you're gonna need to hear from, and, and I don't know if you've done this very long, or if you've even done it.
Just twenty years.
The price you're gonna have to hear to, to be able to, to bring it from the other side of Warfield and stuff, and take it down there and dump it.
How about Pikeville, you looked up Pikeville and other surrounding areas, I don't know.
You get into some of them other counties, and then some of the tipping fees are higher. Sometimes it's closer, but then you have to weigh it out. But the thing about it is, is the, the price, the price, and, and I think you're even satisfied closer to twenty than anything. That's what, that's what you're gonna be, most people that come in, and I, I think he's gonna be close to my price, you may be close to my price. Twenty dollars to assure us that we're gonna make money, but yeah, and I'm gonna tell you something. My best customers, my best customers are normally the poorest customers in the county. They pay me like clockwork. I have, I have one house in Lawrence County, I have one family in Lawrence County that tries, and it's what I call, they try to double-dip me. She's got two sons. Her husband works for a federal mine inspector, she works for the state, her son works for the state, and they all try to throw their garbage in one bin, and, and get me to pick it up, and they've probably got more money than most people. I mean, and listen, if you'd see their homes, you'd say, you'd say, wow, well, I see why they got some money, 'cause they're smart with it.
Listen, thank you for showing up.
I, I'm, I'm...
So gentlemen, it's commercial franchise, commercial, and with the least option.
With the least option.
With the least option, and no, nothing but anything with solid waste, correct?
But the household.
Will the, will the independent haulers be allowed to take theirs to the transfer stations, should they be able to work something out with the person?
They would have to, you know, they would have to work that out, we can't...
Whoever leases it, they'd have to work that out.
The county owns transfer stations right now, what are you gonna do? We own one, we have one. Two. So you're gonna sell those?
No, we sell, we lease one, we lease one.
They're gonna do one or two. They're gonna do one or two. Is that just gonna be, be non-household garbage?
Non-household.
What about your trucks, what about your trucks, you all own them, you lease them? Well, they may wanna, then, and see if this is gonna work, if it don't work, we're gonna get rid of the garbage business. County gonna have nothing to do with the garbage business. You don't have to see, we don't know, but you'd have to keep them a while, what if, what if somebody, the franchisee can do it?
You've heard, you've had your land...
Buy our own trucks back to themselves.
I could ask you one more question. I could ask more questions. Will there be a play on that transfer station for people to take that?
That would be bid out, they'd be bidding out of that transfer station. That lets someone run a transfer station, bid it out, to take anything except solid, I mean, except household garbage. Residential, residential, household garbage. That's what you all want.
That, or still be that, but just not the that we've been used to.
Okay, is that, is that the consensus you want us to be working on?
You know, what about the, uh, I guess, uh, we had in our ordinance, uh, people have to bring it to the curb, and will that all go back in there, will that be up to the haulers?
You all could do it, what we did, what the...
Bring it to the curb, shooting it in the...
That's what you do in Martin County.
Yeah, it, it needs to be brought to the main road, and then you need to put in there also that any house that lives, uh, X amount of a mile up a hauler, it needs to be brought, and it, there's only one house. Now, if there's ten or fifteen houses up that hauler, I have no problem going up it. But if there's one, only two houses, and that hauler's five, six miles long, then they need to bring it to the mouth hauler.
You love me, I'm right in the road.
There's four houses up there. I live about fifteen hundred feet off of the mains road. My driveway is about fifteen, twelve, eleven, twelve, somewhere along there. So I would have to bring my garbage eleven hundred feet down the road.
Yeah, um...
You'd have to bring yours anyway, 'cause you're in a Ford, your neighbor thinks you're...
I, I, I mean, it all depends on, it's all gonna depend on the hauler, the guy that's hauling it, how long the hauler is.
Let me ask you something, you're our hauler. And I say, I'll give you five hundred bucks a month to come up there and take it out my garbage can.
I'd probably come take it.
And, and pretend you clean the kitchen while you're there.
Nah, well, nah, he may not want me cleaning the kitchen while I'm hauling garbage.
He just said pretend. Do they let you bring it out, does the state let them bring it out to the state routes and city?
Yeah, they set it, they set it right out on the head of the road. Now, they set their, most of the time, they set their garbage bins so many feet off the road. But, and, and a lot of them has not got garbage cans sitting there, they've got garbage bins that they set their garbage cans in. But they, they gotta, but you gotta allow, you gotta allow, when they set their garbage bin out there, you gotta allow so many for, for the state to operate.
Mister Muntia, man, you guys have worked today.
When it snows, I mean, you can't say...
So that's the consensus, you all want, is that direction? Just call it Katie Bartadon's company.